Good morning, everyone. We'll call the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors into session. At this time, we have a public comment if anyone wishes to address the board in the boardroom. You can go to the podium and give your name and address. There's three minutes to visit. So, who wish to address the board? No one? We'll move on to the online Zoom audience. Is there anyone raising their hand or indicating they wish to visit with the board?
There is not.
Very good. We'll move on. First thing on our agenda is proclamation for the United Nations International Day of Peace. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the issue of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all peoples and remains humanity's guiding inspiration. In 1981, the United Nations proclaimed the International Day of Peace be devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace, both within and among all nations and peoples. And whereas the United Nations expanded the observance of the International Day of Peace in 2001 to include the call for a day of global ceasefire and nonviolence, and invited all nations and people to honor a cessation of hostilities for the duration of the Day of Peace. And whereas, there is growing support within our nation for the observance of the International Day of Peace, including a group of Dubuque area residents inviting all to create a culture of peace by participating in a county-wide celebration from Saturday, September 17th to Tuesday, October 11th. And whereas local and global violence impels all citizens to work forward, to work toward converting humanity's noblest aspirations for world peace into a practical reality, it is possible to see our community and world turn from violent to nonviolent solutions within our lifetimes. And whereas, the Dubuque Day of Peace organizing committees 2022 focus will be environmental justice, a path to peace, with an in-person and virtual keynote presentation by Nobel Prize recipient Jody Williams on climate injustice from Ecuador to NYC to DBQ on Wednesday, September 21st, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. in the Alumni Campus Center at Lawrence College. Now therefore, the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the staff and citizens of Dubuque County, to hereby recognize the United Nations International Day of Peace and proclaim September 17th to October 11th as days of peace and nonviolence in Dubuque County, Iowa, and urge residents to further affirm a vision of our world at peace by fostering cooperation between individuals, organizations, and nations. Proclamation adopted this 12th day of September, 2022.
I will make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second. Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we move to the approval of the minutes of September 6th. I did not see any changes, Supervisor Whitaker.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we move to consent items. There are none on this agenda, nor do we have procurement procedures. We move to public hearings, which all are zoning matters. Good morning, T M E R Z, Administrator.
Okay, so if you're ready, I'll go ahead and get started on our list.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We've got zoning case 0823 of 22, Dennis and Sally Hunt, A1 to A2. The applicants are requesting rezon from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential, 1.65 acres, to allow them to separate the home and the shed and keep it in current ownership and sell the remaining farmland and agricultural buildings to the neighboring farmer. This property is located adjacent to the city of Eppworth along Bobcat Road and is legally described as the southwest of the northeast, Section 15, T88 North, R1W Taylor Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Dennis and Sally Hunt. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, south, east, and the west. There are no previous zoning cases attached to this property, and there are no special use permits attached to this property. Thirteen rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Eppworth was notified. Comprehensive Plan Chapter 9, Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So this is a case where they're simply trying to divide off the house from the farm for, you know, sale purposes in the future.
So my question is, how does that fit inside the A2 zoning ordinance that was attached to our materials?
So this fits in because we are looking at taking, let me get my other document here. So this has been, the typical A1 to A2 has been to go ahead and separate the land. This fits within a small amount of acreage, which is the 1.65 acres. And this is the appropriate, the appropriate zoning for this is to separate this house out, to make it a residential area, and to maintain keeping the rest of the property as agricultural land. It doesn't create any new homes or add any additional changes. There's no changes to the area. We're just separating the land, the house from the property to do the sale.
Questions of Ms. Henry?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to address the board regarding the zoning request?
This is Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. I've been working with the Hunts here to basically survey off the home that they currently own on the farm that they currently operate. They were made an offer by the neighbors to purchase their entire farm. Dennis and Sally did not want to, I guess, move out of their house. They're happy where they're at. They are, they are retired dairy farmers and basically have been cropping the ground. And Dennis has been actually boarding, caring for the heifers that the buyer is currently housing on Dennis's property. So he's going to continue to live there. He's going to continue to basically work with the livestock that the purchasers of the rest of the land are, are housing on, on his farm. Basically, little to anything is going to change out there as far as looks. It's just a matter of the transfer of the land and, and most of the farm buildings to the neighbor and, and him continuing to live in his house. I guess if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And it is my understanding that there's even a contract that when the home gets sold someday, it will go to the adjacent farmer as well. So it would all stay in agricultural in the end.
Yeah, I think they have the first right of refusal on the, on the acreage that we're creating here.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion to second to open the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I will make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second. Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement. This amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second. Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion that the amendment be adopted and the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second. Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Ready? Okay. 082422, Thomas J. Buddy Revocable Family Trust, A1 to A2. The applicant is requesting rezon from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential, 1.21 acres, to allow him to separate the home, the garages, and the farm buildings so he can sell the farmstead and keep the crop plant. This property is located 0.14 miles southwest of the city of Graff along Graff Road and is legally described as Lot 2 of Buddy Acres, Section 30, T89 North, R1E, Centre Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by Thomas J. Buddy Revocable Family Trust. Zoning in the area includes A1 agriculture to the north, the south, the east, and the west. A2 agricultural residential to the south, R1 rural residential to the south, and R2 single-family residential to the south. The A2 agricultural residential to the south on zoning case number 1230 of 21 was to allow for the construction of a new home to replace an existing farm home. And the R1 rural residential to the south on zoning case number 9015 of 79 was to allow for the construction of a single-family dwelling. And the R2 single-family residential to the south on zoning case number 0818 of 13 was to allow for the existing structure to be converted into a single-family home. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to the property. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Six notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Graff was notified. Comprehensive Plan Chapter 9, Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So this is a case where Mr. Buddy owns quite a bit of land and he is selling, starting to sell off some of his housing that he has because he just doesn't want to maintain them anymore. And I believe there's a renter in here. There is a renter in the home right now, but he's keeping the farm ground for now, but not planning on keeping the home. So again, this is not creating any new homes. It restricts any development. Anybody have any other questions?
I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Motion in second to open public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board regarding this matter?
Again, Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. Yeah, I've been working with Tom Buddy on this property. He had recently sold about 90 acres to the adjacent neighbor on the east side of Tealand Road and ultimately trying to get rid of the, I guess, the, having to deal with the building sites, maintenance, fixing them back up when the renters leave. The thought is to get it set so that he can put this thing up for sale or, you know, basically get it, get it out of his interest. He does intend on continuing to own the crop ground down on the east, on the west side of Tealand Road. Basically putting the minimum one-acre taxable area with the house and, and some of the outbuildings there. Obviously, this is an old, old property and, and he's just looking to, a lot easier to deal with renting crop ground than it is renting this house out and keeping, keeping it under control. He's getting older and he's got a grandson that he's been taking care of since he was a little, little boy. And ultimately, this, this is going to be going to him and he's trying to get, clean it up for him, I guess, before he turns, something happens to him.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Dave, this is Ann. I just have a question. Maybe it's more of a comment. But I understand that this is not changing the way that the neighborhood looks. But it, it seems to me that we're seeing a shift of some kind in that the agricultural land is continuing to be made, in some cases, into larger landholders. And these farm homes then are, you know, kind of cut off into their one acre with these miscellaneous buildings. I understand that it's an appropriate use for A2, but just curious, is this what we're seeing? Is this a trend or is this just continuation of what you've seen in your career?
I can give you, I guess, my two cents on that. Basically, what we're seeing is with the price of this land out here right now, the little guy and the young guy are pretty much done farming, aside from a hobby. You, you're going to see smaller acreages because when you start taking 300-acre farms and putting a $20,000 per acre number on them, you're, you're talking about $6 million. It's, it's sifting, it's, it's set up only for the big operators. The producers of the equipment are not looking to deal with people like me that farm 250 acres and, and do it as a hobby. They're looking for people that farm thousands of acres and buy large piece of, new equipment. And, you know, same thing with the seed, seed dealers. They don't want to, they don't want to deal with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of little operators. They want to deal with single big operators. This whole thing is set up for the large farm with a central operation that dumps corn on semis and trucks it to elevators or their own elevator on their personal property. You know, I guess the little, the little guy's getting pinched out is what's happening. You're going to see these acreages be sold off as big farmers and, and I'm going to say investors buy this land and don't want to deal with the buildings. And, or you're going to see a situation where these farms get so big that they're going to have to be divided down just to get the, the dollars to the point where people can handle them. That's kind of the way I'm seeing it. We're, I think you're going to see more and more surveys trying to sort this out going forward.
But when we move this to just the, the farm home in an A2 on a small, you know, one point, this one's what, 1.21 acres or something, is that an attempt to try to preserve that home for housing?
Well, yeah, there's no sense pushing it in a hole. It's got a value. You know, the, the other outbuildings there are in the process of being tore down or need to be tore down and probably converted back to farm ground at some point. You know, I guess it's seems wasteful to start pushing, pushing these homes in a hole when, when Dubuque is, you know, we hear over and over that they, there's a shortage of, of residential property.
Comment, Supervisor Whitaker?
No.
I have to admit, I don't have my zoning papers in front of me. Do you mind leading us through to that?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second. Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement. This amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second. Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Okay. Zoning case number 0825 of 22, Ronald and Jesselyn Bryner, R1 rural residential to R2 single-family residential. The applicants are requesting rezon from R1 rural residential to R2 single-family residential, 86.15 acres, to allow them to move the lot lines to fix the title issues with the neighbors' houses that encroach on the Bryners' property. And this is to allow for future development as well. The property is located 1.75 miles northwest of the city of Asbury along Five Points Road and is legally described as Lot 1 and Lot 2 of Shroeben Place, Section 16, Lot 1 southwest of the southwest and the southeast of the southwest, and Section 9, T89 North, R1E, Centre Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Ronald and Jesselyn Bryners. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, and the west. A2 agricultural residential to the northwest and R1 rural residential to the north, the south, the east, and the west. The A2 agricultural residential to the northwest was on zoning case number 0311 of 18, and that was to allow for the construction of a new home. The R1 rural residential to the west on zoning case number 0101 of 92 was to allow for the construction of a new home. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property and there's no, there is one special use permit attached to this property and that was on B A case number 0836 of 94, and that was to allow for a mobile home to be placed on the property. Seventeen rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Asbury was notified. Comprehensive Plan Chapter 12, Land Use 179, Objective 3.5, and Page 180, Objective 6.4 may apply to this case. So this is a case where if you're looking at this map and you're looking to the east and the west, the property that is zoned R1, they're, they're asking to have that rezoned. And the reason they're doing that is full disclosure for future development. And it's also, which the following case you'll see, it's also to fix some property line problems. So when they got into this, they found some title issues with the neighbors. The neighbor's property, actually their home is literally on this piece of property. So this is all kind of a, is going to follow up with that. But again, we would take this from R1 to R2 because of setbacks. In the future, the setbacks are better. They are, they are better for the development because there's less, you know, pavement runoff, that kind of stuff. So that's what the request is for. Do you have any questions?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Motion in second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are now in open, we have a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board regarding this case?
Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. In a, yeah, in this case, a little different than, than most. We're kind of sitting out here on Five Points Road, right on the edge of what's currently zoned R1, and then where it rolls into the A1 on the other side of the road. Ron and Jesselyn bought this farm, oh, I want to say back in like 2020. And as we were kind of going through it, trying to figure out what they owned, I guess, and how they typically, Ron and Jesselyn kind of buy these farms and then divvy them back out, sell, you know, put them up for sale on, on smaller type acreages, that sort of thing. But as part of the survey on this, we realized that there's some serious title issues with the Ropkin property on the north side of this, of north side of Five Points Road, kind of in the corner up there where their, where Ropkin's homes are. They've got two homes, one that's, one that's entirely on Bryners' property and one that's partially on, on Bryners' property. And you will be seeing the rezoning on their property following this. We have to get this thing into an R2 zoning around the Ropkin's property so that we can basically reconfigure them so that Ropkins ultimately own what they occupy. And, and the intent going forward is we've got the eight, the R2, R1 zoning on the east side of the road. While we're going through the process on this, the thought is if it ever is developed as a residential development, it would make more sense as most of them or as all of them that we do anymore as an R2 zoning. So we're basically getting it in place all at once. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
And, and I will go and further a little bit. And so on the other side of the road where it's A1, there is a plan to go ahead and attach that A1 property to other parcels and create larger parcels so they stay in ag in the future here. That's already working its way through the process.
I'm familiar with the property. My father-in-law's farm is nearly adjacent. So he's been involved in the case and is, understands what's going to happen and understands that that's where the world is going. So that's the way that is. But is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion in second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are back to the Board of Supervisors. Do we have any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second. Motion in second to approve the rezoning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement. This amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second. Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Make a motion that the amendment be adopted and the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
The motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move on to the next zoning case, please.
Okay. Zoning case 0826 of 22, Ken and Judy Ropkin, R1 rural residential to R2 single-family residential. The applicants are requesting rezon the two acres from R1 rural residential to R2 single-family residential to allow them to move the lot lines to fix the title issues with their houses that encroach on the Bryners' property. The property is located 2.19 miles northwest of the city of Asbury along Five Points Road and is legally described as the west half of the Lot 2 of the southwest of the southwest and the east half of Lot 2 of the southwest of the southwest, all in Section 9, T87 North, R1E, Centre Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Ken and Judy Repkin. Zoning in the area includes A1 agriculture to the north, south, east, and west, R1 rural residential to the north, the south, the east, and the west, R2 single-family residential to the northwest. The R2 single-family residential to the northwest on zoning case number 1033 of 16 was to allow for a residential subdivision consisting of four lots. There are no previous zoning cases attached to this property and there is one special use permit attached to the property, and that was on B A case number 0752 of 01, and that was to allow for the construction of a detached garage. Five rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Asbury was notified. Comprehensive Plan Chapter 12, Land Use, Page 179, Objective 3.5, and Page 180, Objective 6.4 may apply to this case. So this is the follow-up we were just talking about. You can clearly see where the property line problems are, and that is what is being corrected here. And that both of those homes there are both owned by the Repkin, the Red, Repkins.
Questions for Ms. Henry?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Motion in second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on this matter?
Again, Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying. This is, the Ropkins are pretty much the beneficiary of this rezoning and the fact that they own the east half and the west half of this old Lot 2 that doesn't physically fall on top of their, the improvements on the properties that they, they occupy. And ultimately, again, to meet the setbacks, basically to have the zoning in place to, to make the setbacks work for these two, two homes is why we're rezoning it to the A2. We, we can't meet the 50-foot side yards in the, in the, excuse me, the R2. The, we can't meet the 50-foot side yards in the R1 zoning by going to the R2, which reduces those to the 20-foot side yards, allows us to be able to, to make this work between, between the homes and on the east side of the home, homes as they extend those east half, west half of that old Lot 2 to the south towards Five Point Road. And again, we'll be submitting the platting on this as soon as the zoning's in place.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Motion in second to approve the rezoning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the requirement. This amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second. Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Make a motion that the amendment be adopted and the official, adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed in the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second. Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Our last rezoning case.
Okay, so 0827 of 22, Estate of Lucille McAndrew and Janice Tucker, A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential. The applicants are requesting rezon from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural residential, 1.54 acres, to allow them to separate the existing home, the shed, and the silo so a family member could continue to live in that home. This property is located 4.12 miles northwest of the city of Bernard along McCullough Lane and is legally described as the part of the southwest of the southeast, Section 1, T87 North, R1E, Prairie Creek Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by the estate of Lucille McAndrew, the executor of Janice Tucker. Zoning in the area includes A1 agriculture to the north, south, east, and the west. R1 rural residential to the north on zoning case number 9011 of 69 was to allow for the construction of a single-family home. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property and there are no special use permits attached to the property. Eight rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Graff is notified. Comprehensive Plan Chapter 9, Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So this is a case where they're just trying to separate the house again and there will be a platting to follow that all little parcels will be placed into one large parcel because they own other parcels and that will probably go up for auction at some point.
I have no questions of Ms. Henry.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. Motion in second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. She carries. We are now in public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on this case?
Again, Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. Yeah, I met with the McAndrews family out there. Basically a situation where they're auctioning off the farm or they have auctioned off the farm already, actually. Situation where one of the siblings lived with his mother, took care of her in the house that we're rezoning. The ultimate intent here is the family is going to do a family LLC, continue to own the 1.3 acres taxable area that we're rezoning to the A2 to allow their brother to continue living in the home that he's, that he, that he's been living in. um, to allow their brother to continue living in the home that he's, that he, uh, that he's been living in. Uh, ultimately, as long as, as long as he wants, uh, at the point when he no longer wants or needs it, uh, the family will either transfer that to another family member who, uh, most probably would tear down this home and, and probably build another one. Um, or if, uh, nobody's interested, it would get, it sold at that point. Um, basically separated off, uh, the crop ground and it, it has been sold at a incredibly high price, again, very similar to what we're seeing, uh. Um, and, and my comment, the, the, uh, this price is getting priced out of, uh, the small farmer and the young farmer's, uh, price range. Um, so it, uh, I guess in my mind, this is the only way to keep these homes in the area, to keep people in these communities because it's, you know, we're going from families of six, eight, ten, twelve kids to families of one, two, and three. So, um, we need to keep people in these rural communities in these homes.
Dave, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We are back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second, motion, a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, she carries.
I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement. This amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second, motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Make a motion that the amendment be adopted, that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second, motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Very good. We move on our agenda, uh, to the approval of plats.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna start with the writer's third edition final plat. This property is owned by Oakland Farm Real Estate Company and is located point three eight miles northwest of the city Dubuque along Oakland Farms Road with a total of twenty-eight point one four acres surveyed. This property is owned R-two single family residential. The purpose of this plat is to allow the owner to sell the home and the shed in the future and to have a better access to remaining property for future development. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of two point three one acres surveyed with a house and a shed, and it will remain in current ownership and residential use. Lot two is a total of twenty-five point eight three acres surveyed and will remain in current ownership and agriculture use at this time. Lot one will use an existing residential entrance off of Oakland Farms Road and Lot two will have a sixty-six foot access easement across Lot one and it will be named Lauren Lane, or Lauren Ridge, sorry. Uh, there were no additions or corrections required for the plat and the mortgage holders acknowledged it's signed and attached and all of the signatures were current. Uh, this plat's been reviewed by myself as plat's officer, has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So this is just, there was an access issue. They were making sure, they were actually asking for different access and the engineer's office was not in favor of that. So they're changing this so that this can get developed in the future. This was, this is the next phase of the Oakland Farms, uh, residential area.
Any questions for Tammy? Motion to approve the final plat of writer's third edition.
And I will second that.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
Okay, so Clifford South Mount Edition Plat Two. The property is owned by Nathan Kutch and is located point five zero miles east of the city of Ricksville along South Mount Road with a total of fifty-one point one acres surveyed. This property is owned A-one agricultural and A-two agricultural residential, and that was on zoning case eleven twenty-six of twenty-one. The purpose of the plat is to replace the existing mobile home with a new home for financing purposes. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of one acre surveyed with an existing mobile home that will be replaced with a new home and it will remain in current ownership. Lot two is a total of fifty point one eight acres surveyed within existing farm buildings and it will remain in current ownership and use as well. Lot one will use a forty-foot wide access easement and utility easement across Lot two. And Lot two will use an existing residential entrance off of South Mount Road. There were no additions or corrections required for the plat. The mortgage holders acknowledge it's signed and attached. Some of the signatures were over sixty days old and they included this surveyor of October twenty-sixth of twenty-two, engineer November sixteenth of twenty-one, county planning and zoning November sixteenth of twenty-one, county plat's officer November sixteenth of twenty-one, Rickardsville, city Rickardsville, January twelfth of twenty-two, owner's consent June twenty-eighth of twenty-two, county assessor November sixteenth of twenty-one, and county health November seventeenth, twenty-one. This plat's been reviewed by myself as plat's officer, has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So this is just where the gentleman has to separate it off for financing to build the home. He is going to maintain farming and keeping all of the land.
I'll make a motion to approve the plat as presented.
Second, we have a motion, a second to approve the final plat of Clifford South Mount Edition Plat number two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Our final plat is for Y Camp Place number two.
Yes. This property is owned by Young Men's Christian Association. It is adjacent to the city Dubuque along John F. Kennedy Road with a total of thirty-four point one one zero acres surveyed. This property is owned A-one agricultural. The purpose of the plat is to create a children's arboretum on Lot two and it will be abutting the existing, existing arboretum. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of fifteen point three nine three acres surveyed with recreational building facilities and an office building for the Young Men's Christian Association. It will remain in current ownership and use. Lot two is a total of eighteen point seven one seven acres surveyed and it will be sold to the Dubuque Arboretum to create the children's museum. Lot one will use an existing residential entrance off of John F. Kennedy Road and Lot two will have an access from the existing arboretum entrance. They, I will add to that, they've been working with the city of Dubuque to make sure that access is, is, uh, working out for them in the future here. Uh, there were no additions or corrections required for the plat. The bank consent is signed and attached and some of the signatures were sixty days old and they included surveyor May thirty-first of twenty-two, engineer June sixth of twenty-two, county planning and zoning June twenty-first of twenty-two. This plat's been reviewed by myself as plat's offers, has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So this is, as you can see, pretty clear, that is going to go into the children's and, um, as part of a children's arboretum connected to the current arboretum access will come through the arboretum which they're working with the city to make sure the final details are corrected on that. And, um, the other part will maintain being the Y. Do you have any questions or?
Will it's, it remain the zone A-one?
It will remain zoned A-one. So the zoning for the Y has always been A-one. So this is one of those cases where, you know, to have them come in and rezone really doesn't change their use, doesn't change what it does. Um, so I didn't recommend them coming in and trying to rezone things and trying to change that use because it was allowed for that type of use at the time. And I, I do, if you have others, there are people here for it.
I don't necessarily have any questions, but if anyone wants to make any comments or any explanation, you can. I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of Y Camp Place number two.
I will second that.
The motion is second to approve the plat. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Move on to the action items on our agenda. The first is, uh, the only is a resolution approving the hiring of deputies, assistants, and clerks.
On a few elections. Right, that's right. I will make a motion to, uh, approve the resolution for the hiring.
Second, motion, a second to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we have a, um, an email correspondence regarding a resignation from the Sunny Crest Manor Advisory Board. A motion to receive and file.
They'll move it.
In a second. I'll second. We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Um, item nine on our agenda are the appointments with open vacancies. And I believe we'll be addressing that maybe in next, our next meeting, they'll have some.
Yeah, we'll, uh, it will either be, we're coming up quickly. This month is flying by, so we're hoping to have that on the meeting of the nineteenth, um, which will be next Monday.
Move on to personnel requisitions. Um, our first is for a permanent, um, part-time custodian.
We had a resignation, uh, of a gentleman who's moving on to the, uh, school district, I believe. So this will be filling that budgeted position. We'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second, we have a motion, a second to approve the personnel requisition. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Our next, um, matter is a personnel requisition for a permanent full-time deputy auditor. And I would appreciate some information from the auditor about this.
Yeah, would you like to be my deputy auditor? This is, uh, due to the retirement of, uh, uh, a very great asset we've had in our office for quite some time, Mary Hubble. Uh, this is, this is to, uh, replace her. We have, uh, built in a couple of weeks overlap so we can download a little bit of, uh, Mary's information into whomever, uh, chooses to work with us in this office. So I respectfully recommend the approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm just generally, um, curious as to the change in the job description. Can you just address that? I see supervisors are mentioned multiple times. So, um, just if you can give some more information about the, how this person will interact with the board.
Yeah, um, we will make sure that this person is, uh, beating every supervisor with a stick regularly. Um, and, uh, this is gonna be a backup to me and a, and a probably your liaison to the Board of Supervisors. Um, so this is the person who will, uh, be taking minutes, doing a lot of what Mary's been doing. Uh, but we plan on introducing a number of changes. Uh, we've been working towards some technology upgrades and some simplification of some of the processes. And, uh, we're gonna go full four with the, with the new staff members so that they'll be working off of the new sort of methods we use to set up meetings. Uh, we'll also be having them back up our finance director as well. And there's a couple of, uh, finance pieces that we're gonna include in this position as well.
Note that there's grant management, uh, research grants, um, but that doesn't indicate that this person will be writing grants. So what I see is various persons in our, uh, county that are researching and assisting with, but no one is tasked with writing any grants.
That's, that's been something that's been on our office's radar for quite some time. Um, there is a Darth of grant writers out there right now. There, there's, they're not to be found. And the ones that are found are, are, uh, are top dollar. And so I think what we will, what we'd be looking at would be identifying ways that we can figure out um, which grants we would want to apply for and then likely farm those out to some independent grant writers. I think for the time being where we are, given space and given a few other factors, that hiring somebody who, uh, has grant writing experience, um, is probably not the best course of action for our office at this time.
Will we be looking into grants more than we have historically?
I think the answer should be yes to that, uh, provided we're allowed to, um, continue to receive grant funds. Uh, our elections office can no longer receive grant funding, um, for a change in the law earlier this year. Uh, but that doesn't mean the auditor's office, G I S, and the rest of the county can't receive grant funding.
Do you have any questions, Supervisor Wickham? I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition for the permanent full-time deputy auditor.
I will second that.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
At this time, we come to public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? About any issue that is of concern to a person that we're not agenda items? And I would include Mr. Stewart in the back of the room. I apologize if I rushed over R R S. She was present when we did the Day of Peace. So if you wanted to come to the podium and if there were any comments about that, I, I would, um, certainly offer this time to you. At the podium, just give your name and address.
Terry Stewart, four sixty Summit Dubuque. Um, I don't have a prepared remark. Uh, R R S would be more, uh, adept at that, but I just was here to stand in because she's helping someone else on another issue now. Uh, appreciate the board's, uh, uh, recognizing the, uh, Day of Peace event. It basically goes on for about two weeks. It's an annual event, has thousands of volunteer hours to prepare for it. As a Nobel Prize, uh, winning, uh, uh, author, as the keynote speaker for the main event and, uh, and a walk to raise money for, uh, refugee children in, in Dubuque and a number of other very worthwhile activities. And I'd recommend people take advantage of, uh, of the work that's been done to celebrate the International Day of Peace in Dubuque this month.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your effort on organizing all along, all of this along with R R S as well.
And do you have a signed proclamation that I could take a copy with? We do. Thank you very much.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board? They're in the board chambers. Is there anyone online?
There is nobody indicating they would like to speak online.
Taking a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.